Okay, we can go to number three, which is approval of November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two village board meeting minutes. I'll take a motion in a second. I saw Derek and then Amanda, any discussion from anybody? See none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll go to four, which is public appearances, comments, communications, public comment. This is part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to address the board this time? Not seen none? All right, we'll keep moving. We'll go to five, which is approval of vouchers in the amount of one million, one hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-three cents. So if we can get a motion in a second, I see Phil and Carleen. We can see if there's any questions from anybody. Does he have anything? Yeah, Mike's got something.
Please, a number one, three, one, four, eight, B O R completion. I don't recognize B O R.
Board of review would be B O R.
B, oh yeah. Because we had legal counsel there.
Yeah, that was for our board of review that we had in June. In June for, it's all part of the assessment process.
Yeah, I was, I was there, I just didn't know that we were still paying for it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I can, I can look at it detailed, but do you have it there?
Yeah.
Who's the vendor? Who's the vendor?
It's in U S Bank.
Oh, I know what it is. I know what it is, yeah. It is to pay accurate for their board of review process. So we have to pay them in like quarterly installments, and that was to pay them. And I had some hangups with the board of review process, so I wouldn't pay them until everything was finalized, and the statement assessment was to the county.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Anything? All right, see nothing? Candy will take a voice vote.
All right, Galish?
Yes.
Belo?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Wunsch?
Yes.
Beshin?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Okay. We're on to six, which is the consent agenda. We have A, B, and C. If somebody wants to make a motion in a second for that, Carleen, and I see Jenna. Any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Seven is reports of committees. Items are for discussion, possible action. First one, A, library board minutes from October twelfth. They were in our packet. B is the Oregon area fire EMS district commission meeting minutes for November tenth. They were also in our packet. We can go down to C, which is diversity, equity, and inclusion committee. Carleen, you want to take it?
I do.
Okay.
I have copies here of the minutes, just in case, I think everybody gets them, but in case you haven't seen them, the minutes from the meeting. I'm actually going to start with the third thing first. So we had discussed in June paid holidays and thinking about paid holidays and observances of federal holidays that village staff and should have off. And that we, I don't think I made enough for everybody.
That's fine.
I made like twelve copies, so I apologize. And also the fact that M L K Day, M L K Junior Day, and Juneteenth regularly follow up, fall on the second Monday of the month, which is always a village board meeting. So as a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee, we talked about this, and we, we really feel pretty strongly that these are holidays that, that the village should observe and take the lead on. And we've written a statement here, it's the top of the second page, and it reads that the Village of Oregon take the lead in making a concrete witness to diversity, equity, and inclusion by observing Martin Luther King Junior Day and Juneteenth as paid holidays for all of the village staff. No board committee meetings would be held on these days. So that is our recommendation to the board, and I guess.
Carleen, do you want to, should we take the motions, each separate one? We can do that?
Yes.
All right. So why don't we get a motion in a second, get it, get it on the table? Jenna, motion? Second, or Carleen, you want to, do you want to do it, Carleen?
I, I don't know how the protocol goes for that. Does the committee make the recommendation and somebody else moves, or can I move to?
You would make.
You're a village board member.
Okay, so I will make the motion that the village board accept this recommendation from the D E I committee.
Okay, and Jenna, second? Any discussion on this? Anybody? Okay.
I would just say that we felt like even if other, even if other municipalities are not observing it, that we, we should walk our walk.
Okay. All right, yeah, Amanda, has got a comment?
Yeah, so, so this is just, if we approve this, this would be sort of a direction to staff that we'd like you to, you know, bring up, make a, an ordinance or something?
Add this to the paid holidays, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, assuming it passes, we'll put together a written amendment to our current holiday policy that includes these two holidays, and we'll have the board approve that as well.
So can I ask about other village holidays? I mean, do we, we don't have like Columbus Day, sorry for calling it Indigenous Peoples' Day. I, I recognize the problematic nature of Columbus, but like we don't recognize that, correct? There's no other holidays that we would be taking away in order to?
Memorial Day and Labor Day, Christmas, Thanksgiving, Fourth of July.
So it's New Year's.
Christmas Eve, Christmas Day.
New Year's.
There's eight of them.
Okay, so, so these would be adding to that, and I'm just wondering what, and I support this, I think it should be done. I'm just asking what the impact to the budget would be then, because that does cost money, and what would that look like?
Yeah, I think it would be not, yeah, so the vast majority of employees are going to get paid either way, whether holiday pay or for being here. So that doesn't change anything. The only difference would be for holiday pay for people that do have to be here, which would be our police officers, which have a me too clause in their contract for these two holidays if they're given to the other village employees. And then some of our public works employees, I believe in utilities, also come in for a couple hours usually.
Right.
Days, so that would be, you know, time and a half for, for all of those employees. Is it significant? Not, not that I'm concerned about, at least.
Okay.
I don't think it really causes too much of a concern for professional purposes.
Okay.
Okay, so, so we have a motion in a second to approve. Any other discussion? Okay, see none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, Carleen?
Okay. Okay, so the second thing was about making a recommendation to generate a larger applicant pool. So we have created a, a recommendation for suggested places that the, that the board, or that openings on committees and boards be posted. And this is under four B, the formalized recommendation to the board for generating a larger applicant pool. And it reads, the D E I committee recommends that openings for committees and boards of the Village of Oregon be posted and distributed to the following places. The Open Oregon Facebook page, the Open Information Facebook page, Joining Forces for Families, social workers, the Oregon School District, the Oregon Area Food Pantry, the Oregon Youth Center, the Oregon Chamber of Commerce, Oregon Clergy, Oregon Rotary Club, Oregon American Legion, Oregon Optimist Club, Oregon Lions Club, Oregon Resource Center, the Village of Oregon D E I committee members, area businesses with community bulletin boards. The D E I committee also recommends that every effort be made to guarantee a diverse, inclusive, and equitable membership on all committees and boards. We realize that, that's the way that reads. We realize that there is a legal requirement for certain places. We also know that a lot of people who may be interested in these are not necessarily, number one, aware of those places, or number two, checking them with any kind of regularity. And I know for the D E I committee in particular, I put things up in envelopes with a little flyer that people could pull, I made it really colorful, I put it in a lot of different places where people would see it, and at least three of the committee members from our second round, that's where they saw it. So I, we felt pretty strongly that we needed to just expand the places to non-traditional places to, for postings. So that is the motion.
Okay, so a second? And we can have discussion? Yep, Amanda?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. So, Carleen, can I ask, so how, how would we, what would be acceptable posting of this? Is it sending a link? Is it, do we have to send them a hard copy? Did you guys think about that, or what do you think?
We didn't go into that part, and that's certainly something, I know Candy, this is usually your responsibility, right? That, that I would be more than happy to, to have a conversation about what that would look like, and to help check with those places and find out if, you know, if we were to send them something, if they would print it and post it, or whatever, so that, and maybe it's just like the Oregon listserv, what, you know?
Well, that's kind of what I was going to say, we do have e-notify.
Mm-hmm.
So the, I don't have a problem getting, I, I think it will need some clarification on some of these things, like what does Oregon clergy exactly mean? Like, I think I'll need some further clarification on that. But I think a path moving forward would be for these people to, to join the e-notify list.
Right, yeah.
And then they would be responsible for posting it.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to try to figure out, and I'm sure committee members would as well with notifying those folks.
Yeah.
And, and explaining what, what the goal is. And just for clarification, the Oregon clergy used to have a list serve of their own that seems to not be as active as it was.
Right.
So, but just to try to generate just some more places that people can learn about possible, possibilities for getting involved in, in village government.
Yeah, and then I, I mean, I don't know, Martin can add to this too, but I do have some concerns with the, like how I would, if there was open records requests for the open Oregon Facebook page? Because I don't man that.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know exactly what the legalities would be.
Right, it's my understanding if we make a post, it's an, it's an open record at that point. We have to maintain it, but we don't have any control over it at that point. So we might not be honoring our applications under open records law in that case.
So, so when I post things, for instance, to the Wisconsin Fair Maps Coalition, if I'm posting something that I want people to see, I just put the link there, and then it brings them to your, you know?
Right, but people can still comment, and if they wanted all of the?
Oh, right, 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 right.
Yeah, so it becomes, I think it can become a.
Yeah.
Issue.
So, there's, well, you had your hand up first, you go ahead, Jenna, then.
So I guess, from, I know we have a, a motion second on this, but thinking about that there's still information that needs to be gathered on how best to implement some of these recommendations, I feel like we should maybe either table this to a future meeting, or instead of doing a motion as a directive, do it as guidance, you know, so, I, I don't understand quite the differences, so please give me some insight if I'm thinking about this wrong, but give them guidance to staff to, to look into how to implement these things, because, you know, again, I'm looking at joining forces for families, do they have a building that we can post something? I'm not sure, but we need to, I feel like we need to find a lot of that information out before we can, we should give any sort of directives to staff, so.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. I mean, we generated a list of places where we might be able to contact a broader pool of folks, and that's what this was about, not specifically do this, you know?
Okay, Amanda?
Yeah, and I just wanted to say too, like the Facebook pages that are for groups like that, there is a way to make a post and not allow comment on the post?
Opens up a different can of worms.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, people have the right to comment on things.
It's like a public forum thing.
Yeah.
I would want to ask.
We do, yeah.
Okay, yeah, then back to, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Mike?
Would it be possible in the mailing that we're putting out for people's taxes to have one sentence that encourages them to sign up for e-notify and tells them where it is?
I think we are, yeah.
I, we, we have in the past, but for sure we can, for sure.
Okay, so it looks like we, we, we need to get some more details and some more information. We do have a, a motion in a second. Candy, how do we, can we just change, table it? Can we just?
Move to table.
Or you can just make a motion to direct us to work on.
Yeah, I can change the motion to say, use this as, to, we'd like the staff to use this as a guide for places to post openings.
Yep.
And who's second?
I did, and I will agree to that, yeah.
Okay, all right. So we got a, a new motion, a new second. Any other discussion?
Just, I wanted to make one comment too. There's a little wrinkle to all of this because the boards, committees, and commissions are appointed by the village president, so they're all political appointees, or they're nominated at least. So potentially you could have a president that doesn't want to go out for application, they just want to nominate people that they want to nominate. And so I think we have to think about that too, if that's, if this is important, then that might be an issue that the board needs to contend with in the future.
So we actually had a conversation about that in one of the past meetings, not, not the one about the arts before, and you had brought up that that's the way that, that the board, this board has always done things, and it's never been a problem because the president always brought it. So it begs the question whether we need to just revisit that policy altogether, if what, if what we as a board are committing to is trying to be more inclusive and, and equitable, and have a more diverse pool of applicants. So that's, I mean, that, that is a whole nother can of worms.
All right, yeah, Mike?
On the other hand, we, we did put in there that it's got to be approved by everyone on the village board, or by the majority of the village board, and we've seen how that works already, so.
Right, that's true.
Phil?
Getting a little further into weeds on nominations, applications versus nominations. So now we have people that, that apply to committee, and then I'm assuming right now Randy screens those, perhaps with others. So we have people that apply, and we all, and secondly, we have a nomination process. And what we're talking about tonight is getting more people to apply, right? So, and then, am I correct then, that then Randy would, or village president would then screen those applicants and make nominations from that group? So I think what we're proposing here fits all with that process unless I'm missing an element.
Well, the, the wrinkle would be if you had a president that didn't want to go out for applications. They wanted to nominate someone that they wanted to nominate, which is within their authority to do.
Right.
And then how is the board going to respond to that with this kind of policy in mind?
So the issue would be if someone that did not apply, but then village president chose to nominate.
I mean, you could have a president that doesn't want to use application processes for nominations.
Yeah, I, I think that, I agree a hundred percent.
And so if you, typically my, my, the way I did it, and we did it with this committee too, is I, we got applications, and typically I'll meet with whoever is going to be the village board rep. So, because, I mean, I want to be open too, I want to have other input, and, and I'll ask Martin's input and, and the person too, and I, that I think has worked well, but, but.
I only have one experience.
Yeah, nobody, I guess the, the village doesn't have to do that, that's just sort of what I, what I like to do, so, yeah.
Well, what we have to do is the policy, and.
Yeah.
And looking forward, you may, you know, the process they use, we might all find acceptable, but one election can change either side of that equation.
Yes.
And then we have a policy that we have no way to decide, right, yeah.
Yeah, Mike?
Can we just amend the applicable section in chapter one to specify that there will be an application process?
So the, the way that nominations and confirmation just work is within state statute, so there's only like four or five specific ways that we can do it? I think if you want, if the board wanted control of the process, it would have to change the ordinance to reflect that the village board will nominate and confirm, which is an allowable thing under state statute.
All right, Phil?
Just bear in mind, if we went that route, that this, that will become part of our business to screen applicants at these meetings or special meetings. Just in case people want to be, start doing that. That would be the result.
So that, that sounds like another conversation.
Sure does.
Derek?
I'd just say that in our previous conversations, I think the guardrails that we came up with for this whole process was the fact that the village board has to approve it, and we've seen, we've seen just recently with the Public Arts Committee that, I mean, there was two nominations that didn't get approved, so I think there's already kind of a guardrail in process, or in the process already. I think we might be overthinking this just, just a hair. And as far as look, broadening the pool of applicants, I think is, is a fantastic way to go. If the village president decides to just nominate someone who hasn't applied, I would think it incumbent upon the current sitting village, or whatever village board is sitting, to decline that nomination until they've either gone through the application process, or if they just don't care for the applicant to move on to someone else.
And just so you know, that's, that's not my style.
No.
All right, can we, can we deal with this? The motion in a second? So we got a motion in a second, any other discussion on, on that? That's, let's get that approved, and, Phil?
So we're not changing any policies, just changing the way that we garner our applicants.
Well, we're making a recommendation right now, and then we'll come back with something that Candy and I.
Yeah.
The motion I have is that you're directing them to work with staff to create.
But we're not changing.
There's nothing changed.
Nothing changed yet.
Okay, I'm good.
Future discussion, okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, Carleen, you got one more?
All right, so the last thing is something that has had a lot of conversation and concern and speculation in social media and around the village, and Derek brought up last time, and that has to do with the village board, or the village president, or someone making a statement when some sort of incident happens where, as in the case on, on October twenty-third, where someone was killed by a law enforcement officer. So the diversity, equity, and inclusion committee met, talked about that, and we have written a statement here that we, that we, that's in the notes, or in the, in the packet. So I'll read that, and then there is an additional thing. So the statement reads, "The Village Board of Oregon acknowledges that a tragic incident has occurred in our community. We are not at liberty to share much information at this time, but are deeply aware of the trauma and impact such situations create. An officer-involved critical incident involving lethal force occurred on October twenty-third. Our hearts go out to the victims, the family, and friends of the suspect and the entire community. Our commitment is to preserve and protect all human life, and it is important to all of us that we retain the trust and goodwill of the Oregon community. We will update the situation as we are authorized to do so." And then there was also the suggestion of adding crisis hotline information to that statement. So that is the statement that we suggest is put out to the community from the village board.
All right, so we should probably have a, a motion in a second, get it on the table for discussion?
That is the motion.
Yeah, all right, so Carleen, you're making the motion, and Mike is second. All right, discussion on this? Yep, Amanda?
So I'm not comfortable with this. I don't think the village board should make any statement until we have more information. I feel like there's a lot of trauma to go around surrounding this incident, and I'm, I, I don't agree with parts of the statement, some of the words, and I would prefer to do something later, possibly, instead of putting out something that is inaccurate or incomplete. But I, I would, I don't by any means want to silence the voice of the D E I committee, and I feel like if the D E I committee wants to put out a statement like this, I would be okay with that, because that's their purview.
All right, Amanda, or, I'm sorry, Jenna?
Yeah, so similar to what Amanda said, and also reflecting on what our chief had said at our last meeting, I feel like we, as a village board, should wait until we have the completed investigation and all of the facts before we release any kind of a statement, if we choose to do so at that time. But it seems early, considering we just don't have all the information that we might need to make an accurate statement if we, if we need to make one.
Okay, all right, so Phil, and then Carleen? Carleen, you, go ahead.
I actually feel like we're late in making this statement, and that we should have made it a while back, and just have acknowledged the trauma that has happened in our community, and that we can't say anything more but acknowledge the trauma and the commitment of the board to our community and to providing information when we can, not divulging anything that we cannot divulge, but I think by not having, and I think this is actually a, a subsequent discussion that I think Derek tried to initiate last week, that we as a board need to acknowledge that something happened in our community, and by staying silent and waiting, it, it does not actually say, we know this happened, and we care, and we're, and there's, there's trauma here. Now, I, I could change these, we as a committee could change these, it's, I don't really feel like it's the position of the D E I committee to make a statement like this. We happen to be, to take this on because the person who was killed was a person of color, but I personally feel like this is something that should come directly from the board, and should come, you know, acknowledging, not with necessarily a whole lot of information, but acknowledging the trauma and, and, and putting out resources to the community from the board.
Phil?
My concerns are actually more global than that. I appreciate the time that Carleen and the D E I committee has put in, but I'm concerned that we would be setting a, setting a practice by this, and any action we take, thereby could set a precedent. And if we're setting a precedent, what are the parameters of, that incidents like this, which ones do we react to, and which ones do we not? That could turn into a lengthy agenda item, I think we would discuss the particular parameters, and I don't know that we could, I'm not confident we could come to a conclusion, and when we would, and would not react. And for that reason, I would not support issuing this statement.
So Martin, just a clarification, we, we do not have a, a policy in terms of statements from the village board? Am I correct?
I don't, I don't know if the police department has a standard policy for media or not.
Yeah, so, yes, we do, it's on our website, the Public Information Officer Policy, which covers, essentially it's a balancing act, and you need to be mindful of the laws that exist, and I think eloquently put, you know, boundaries or parameters. And I think depending on the body that send out, sends out that statement, it might be different as well. I know for us, like I explained before, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, it's, it's not our investigation, it's definitely active. For those two reasons, we would definitely, as a police department, not provide. For those two reasons, we would definitely, as a police department, not provide a statement. But then there's also laws to be mindful of, and I don't know what laws would apply to the village board or a DEI committee. But for the police department, we also have to be very, very mindful of Marcy's Law as well, which is newer. It's, it's a very difficult law to navigate through, but it's there for very good reason, that's to protect victims involved.
Okay, yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I agree with Carleen that if anything, we're late putting out a statement on something like this. It seems to me that, that when one of our citizens are shot in the, and killed in the street, that by, by a law enforcement person, that we should at least acknowledge and realize that. I mean, in the, in the case of Jose Carlos Jimenez, he was pretty well-known in town. There's been a fair amount of comment on it, and I think it's appropriate for the village board to put out a statement in this circumstance that at least recognizes what occurred without going into detail. I think it's absolutely inappropriate for the DEI committee or any other committee of the village board to be putting out statements on behalf of the village or their committee without it going through the village board. So, I would be totally opposed to the DEI committee doing that itself.
Carleen, did you have?
Clarify.
You were next. You were. Okay, all right, Amanda, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say, I, I wasn't going to suggest that the DEI committee put out a statement on behalf of the village board. I meant the DEI put out a, a statement on behalf of the DEI committee, taking out that village board. That's, that's why, was my intent, just to clarify.
Okay. All right, are we ready? Yeah, Derek?
As far as statements goes, I'm, at least from where I'm sitting, and from what I've heard these last couple of meetings, I'm less concerned with statements from the village board, and more interested in getting information out to the community. I think a statement is appropriate at some point. I'd rather not knee-jerk on a statement and issue something, and again, I agree that, I have mixed, mixed feelings on that. I feel that it's too late, but also too early all at the same time, because there is ongoing investigations. The fact that we're talking about it, I think goes a, you know, a long way to at least letting the community know that, hey, this is on our mind, and we're going to address this. As far as the timeline goes, it's very up in the air, in my opinion. And again, with what Phil was saying, as far as precedence setting for future incidents, I think we do kind of got to be a little bit cognizant of that as well.
All right, Carleen?
So, I'm just gonna, I, I do think that it would be appropriate for the village board to have a protocol that, for incidents that are serious and that impact the community, and especially where there's so much conversation and speculation happening in social media and in other places that have people upset, and to, to just acknowledge. I, I, I'm not asking for, and I don't think the committee is saying that there should be explanation when we have none, or there should be details when it's not, it's not appropriate. That is not it at all, it's an acknowledgement that something has happened and that it has impacted people, and that we are aware and, and are, are empathetic with the people who have been impacted. I just think it's, it's an appropriate thing for the people who, who are on the board of the village to do and to have a protocol for. I, I also think it's safe to say that these kinds of things don't happen often here, and so we're not really prepared to do them. And so, having a protocol and setting a precedent, I think is something that we need to approach very thoughtfully. And, but that we do need to acknowledge that this kind of thing could happen again. And if it did, we, we have some experience now. So, I wouldn't, I don't think that we need to make those decisions tonight, but I do think we need a protocol. And I do think on this one in particular, that we're late.
All right, Mike?
Given the comments that I've, I've heard tonight, I'd like to withdraw my second. And the reason being is not that I don't think the statement should go out, but I do not want to see a statement from the village board where half the people vote for it and half the people don't, and maybe it gets overturned on something that's as important as this is. And I would rather pull the motion at this point, from my perspective, my second to the motion, and, and look to have a more in-depth discussion about policy and what we're going to do going forward with things like this.
And, and I'll just second that, Mike, I, I just, not, not the motion, but I mean, I, I agree. There, there needs to be discussion, there needs to be some kind of policy on how we sort of approach these things, so. All right, so Mike withdrew his.
You can't really withdraw.
Can he, or can't, or should we vote on?
I mean, you can.
I, can I withdraw the statement?
You can withdraw the motion altogether, or you can leave the motion as is and vote on it, however you prefer.
Well, I, I like Mike, I don't feel like I want to put anybody in a position of voting against something that acknowledges that something has happened that is, that has impacted our community in a, in a way that has been really traumatic for a lot of people. I do think that we need to have a protocol, should something like this happen again, that is, that, and, and I understand the police department's protocol and the village board's protocol do not have to be the same thing. Certainly, we wouldn't want to divulge anything and put the police department in any kind of an awkward situation, or any more difficult situation than they already are. But I do think that the community looks to us to, we're, we're supposed to be the leaders, right? So, looks to, looks to us to do that, and, and I think that we need to, to step up to that. So, I don't know quite how to do that, Candy.
So, if I'm hearing you want, maybe, perhaps you'd like to withdraw the motion, make another motion that kind of directs you to have a further discussion, and then we can put it under future agenda items?
That, what she said.
Okay. So, look at a policy and have a discussion about how the village board proceeds with statements. So, so Carleen is making the motion, can we have a second?
So, I'm withdrawing this motion, and I'm making a motion that we as a board have a conversation and create a protocol for how we will address situations like this, should they occur in the future.
Okay, second, Mike is second, okay. Any other discussion? Derek?
Yeah, first, I'd just like to thank Carleen and the DEI Committee for drafting this up such as it is. And I think that, like I say, just us discussing this goes a long way to showing the community, the community that it is on our mind. As much as I appreciate statements, there's nothing more impactful than actual policy change. So, I think that this is the correct direction, and thanks for going about it this way.
Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, I just want to say too, I don't think it's ever too late to acknowledge trauma. I think that's an important thing to do, and I, I look forward to the discussion.
I don't think I said it was too late, I said it was late.
It was late, yeah.
All right. All right, so we got a motion, the second. Ready, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, okay. All right. Yeah, absolutely. All right, we're down to D, which is Plan Commission. First one is Ordinance Number Twenty-two eighteen. Ordinance changing the zoning classification of a property located at tax parcels. I'm not going to read all those numbers, but Plan Development District, Veridian Homes, Greenview Preserve Neighborhood. And Elise, how do you want to, how would you like to handle this?
I can give a brief overview and then answer any questions that you have, and then. So, Veridian has been through the Plan Commission, a couple of different meetings, and I think also a joint meeting with the village board earlier this year for a comprehensive plan amendment to change the, the area north of Mary Hall Neighborhood and east of Cemetery from single-family residential to planned neighborhood, so allowing a mix of different residential types. So, that was drafted up this summer, later this fall, they submitted their preliminary plat, as well as their, their GDP, so their rezoning for the property and their SIT, so their specific implementation plan, the site plan, architectural standards, that type of thing. So, the October Planning Commission meeting that was first presented, there was a handful of neighbors that, where there were some concerns, just kind of about creating a more natural transition from the existing neighborhood into the new neighborhood, given that there are some changes to land use types, different lot sizes, things that were, we don't see elsewhere in the village. It's kind of a new, new land use pattern for us. So, Veridian did make some of those changes, they came back with a revised plan, which added a park to the neighborhood, provided some more transition from the existing single-family neighborhood into their twin homes. And this is the updated plan that Jeff has up on the, up on the screen. At the, this was presented at the November Planning Commission meeting. There were also some changes requested at that meeting of Stoddard Drive, if you can kind of point that out, Jeff, on the map, to have, since those homes are existing Stoddards, so the.
This one, please.
Yep. To kind of stair-step the front yard setback, and kind of create a more natural transition from what they're now to what's being proposed. So, all of our, the majority of our single-family homes in the village have thirty-foot front yard setback. Veridian had requested twenty feet, so there are a couple of lots that are now called transition lots. They'll have thirty-foot setback and then a twenty-five-foot setback on one lot, and then stepping back into that closer twenty-foot front yard setback. So, that was a change that was made kind of after that Plan Commission meeting, that's been reflected now in the zoning documents here, the GDP and the preliminary plat as well. And I think that kind of wraps up the changes. So, at a later date, you'll see a final plat of either some or all of the neighborhood, but this will be the zoning step, and then the preliminary plat is the next agenda item. So, I've been answering any questions, and we do have the Veridian team here too, if anybody has any further questions.
And, and maybe I can make it, because I was at both Plan Commission meetings. I, I do have to give Veridian a little kudos, there were, there were things that neighbors wanted to see changed. They, they came back, made some changes. I didn't get any emails after that last Plan Commission meeting. I think that, I think the best thing, if, if I lived near this neighborhood, every one of those houses are going to be owner-occupied. There are no rentals at all in this development. So, I think, I think Veridian did a really good job of, of taking the, taking the questions from the neighbors. These are in, and tell me if I'm wrong, Chris, but these are, these are slated to be in the three hundreds, is that, am I?
Some of those.
Oh, except for the real big, big lots.
Right, yeah, so I think starting at the three, low to mid-three hundreds of some of these twin homes, and then there are some freestanding single-family homes that are alley-loaded, that are on the smaller lots. So, then the price range kind of goes all the way up to what they call kind of the state homes, so more seven-hundred-thousand range. But, a mix of housing types that you can kind of tell here, the different colors represent the different lot sizes. So, it's well-mixed throughout the whole neighborhood, not just one side of the neighborhood or another.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it, it offers people who want to come to the village, you know, maybe three hundred is still a lot, but it's, if you, if you look at what houses are going for these days on the websites, they're a lot, a lot higher than that. So, I think for that reason too, it's a, it's a good thing, so. Mike?
Yeah, it's sort of sad that the new affordable is three hundred.
I know, I got you, I got you.
Pre-COVID, these were two fifties, two sixties. And so, give everything time, there's a big slowdown in housing right now, a big recession looming over us, and hopefully that forces some of the material pricing back down to, to an affordable level.
I totally get it. So, I mean, it's not meant as a critique. I actually like this development a lot. I like the variety of housing styles that are proposed, the, the variant setbacks. I think it will make it a much more approachable, walkable neighborhood. I like the smaller lot sizes, I think that's the wave of the future, as far as I'm concerned, both. I mean, we've discussed it in your, or you discussed it in your affordable housing plan. Certainly, the Sustainability Committee is making some of these same recommendations, and, you know, this is ahead of the curve, as far as I'm concerned, so, you know, good job, thank you.
Yeah, Phil?
As has happened in the past, trustee Wunsch is still in my comments. So, I would echo that, no. And also, I wanted to mention the, I know that the Park Board and potentially the Planning Commission asked you to expand the park area, and you're willing to work on that, and, and very happy to see how those changes came out.
Yep.
I wanted to mention that.
Yep, thank you.
All right, yeah, Jenna?
I was just gonna agree with trustee Spankampf, and Wunsch, this is an exciting development. I like that it offers a style of housing with the alley-loaded that we don't see in Oregon, at least not to my end all, I don't know at least if I'm wrong, but I'm trying to think of a.
Couple areas, yeah.
Yeah, and so, I like that it brings about, expands on something that we don't have a lot of, and brings affordability, and it's good to see it go nice.
Okay, all right, so can I make the motion that we approve? Somebody wants a second, that, or Carleen, I saw Carleen saying first. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, okay, then we'll do the second piece of this preliminary plat submitted by Veridian Acquisitions LLC for Greenview Preserve. Elise, I don't, you need to say anything, or?
Same development, and the changes with those transition lots have been added here on the preliminary plat, and then you will see a final plat at a future meeting.
All right, I'll, I'll move approval, and Phil will second. Anybody discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, you guys are ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the one we've been waiting for, number eight, Unfinished Business, items offered discussion, possible action. A is twenty-twenty-three municipal budget. Martin, should we, why don't we do this, why don't you maybe tell us, we've seen the budget several times, anything different from the last time, and then we can, we can open the public hearing, okay?
No, nothing's changed since last week's meeting. The only thing I would say is, you know, A, B, C, and D here are kind of a package deal in a lot of ways. Each one sort of relies on the other, relies on the other, relies on the other. So, you know, if the budget were to pass, but then one of these later ones weren't to pass, the budget would basically go void at that point, because the budget relies on that revenue, the salaries rely on that revenue, so. That would just be my only comment.
All right, so let, let me make a, because I, I have, I have an issue with C and D, and, and I would not, I would not vote for that. Yeah, Jenna?
So, my question was procedural.
Yeah, can we pull it up?
Based on Martin's comments, should we be voting on C and D and possibly B before we vote on eight, A two? Because if C and D specifically don't pass, then, like you said, the budget is small, so should we just rearrange those?
All right. Should we do, do you want to do them separate, all of them?
Yeah.
All right, so Jenna, you're, B, B, C, and D, separate, or just C and D?
Um, I mean, I think.
C and D.
Yeah, I think C and D specifically need to go before the budget, in my opinion.
Okay, let's do C then, Ordinance Number Twenty-two nineteen, Ordinance creating Section three-point-one-two of the Village Municipal Code, imposing a municipal vehicle registration fee?
Hold up, bro.
Okay, second. All right, I saw Amanda's hand, discussion. So, I, I didn't vote for this to go forward before, and I'm not going to vote for this tonight. And, and partly is, for me, it just seems, it's not that I, I am against what, why it's on the agenda, and that. It, it, for me, it's all the taxes at once. We got the school referendum, we got our, we're gonna have our village board, we're gonna have these two things. It, it, it just sort of goes against my principle, and I, and I just want to, I want. It, it just sort of goes against my principle, and I, and I just want to, I want to share something with you. Saturday afternoon, I got an email from somebody in the village, and I just want to read it, and she says, "I'm, I'm a, I'm a single retired person on one fixed income. I'm already concerned about the possibility of being forced out of my home for the fast, for the past forty-three years by additional fees, such as the village vehicle registration, street light, and the increased burden of the school reform and the rising cost of goods," like, we, we all know that. So out of principle, I'm not, I'm not gonna vote. It's, it'll probably pass, but that's fine. I just, I just not comfortable passing either C or D, so. Any other comments? Yeah, Jenna?
So I, too, will be voting against the implementation of a vehicle registration fee for similar reasons. I, I recognize, and we've talked about it, we had the resolution at our previous meeting about how the state has continued to not fulfill their duties in addressing municipal funding, but I also feel like, you know, I, I, we're, I, I recognize that we're in a terrible position here, right? Because we still need to be providing services to our residents, they have an expectation of services, and also, you know, I look at the wheel registration fee, the street light fee, we're looking at feeding people free in parks, that was addressed in the last meeting, and, you know, so we're shifting everything another way, and I, I know that it's a terrible position to be in, and also, I don't know that continuing to raise all these fees for people is, is the right way to, to fund our municipal government, so.
Great. Yeah, Karleen?
I agree that this is not the right way to fund the municipal government. I will be voting for this, because I don't see that we have an alternative. I think that we cannot continue to not pay our employees what they, what they should be earning, and I, I think that that is a priority. Also, I think that, that the services that we offer to the residents of the village are things that people want and need, and, you know, the library is something that we want and need, the senior center is something that we need and want, and, you know, down the line, I don't see places where we can cut services, and so I don't see that we have an option. Do I wish we had another one? Do I wish there was more shared revenue, or there was some other way, the tax levy was different? Absolutely, I wish that was the case, because really, people are paying twice. They're paying the state government, and the state government is keeping the money, and then they're having to pay here, so that we can fund what we need. So I will be supporting both of these, not because I want to charge people more money, but because I want us to be able to provide the services that, that residents need and want, and I, I feel like it is absolutely imperative that we pay village employees what they are worth and what they need to survive.
Okay.
And thrive.
Mike?
I want to support everything that Karleen just said. For me, one of the worst things that we could do for employee morale is to commission a compensation study, and then not bother to fund the study, because we don't want to raise the taxes and the money to do that. We have balanced our budget for several years, at least, on our employees. It's indicative of the fact that they were significantly underpaid in the compensation study. To do that again would, I think, just not contribute to good morale within our workforce to say, "Well, you know, you really should be getting a six or seven percent raise, but we don't want to give that to you, so here's your three percent, and, you know, go away." So I support this, I agree with Karleen that I wish that there was another way to fund things, but we either, we are at the point with this village where we either raise taxes to fund things, or we start cutting services. And I choose at this point to do the
So, so I, I want to make, just make, make it clear to the rest of the board, I, I have, my vote is, has nothing to do with not wanting to take care of our village staff. For, for me, this is about, and this, this email I got, the woman talks about the village heartily welcoming the haves, well, while perhaps single seniors and others, the have-nots. And so that's really what my vote is about, I'm, I'm sticking up for them. We may, I hope we're never in that position, that we have to live paycheck to paycheck, but that's what my vote, I have nothing, nothing but good things to say about the staff. I think they, they deserve what, what they get, but for me, this is about who I am, and I'm, I want to make, I want to say something about the people who don't have a lot of money, and so that's why I'm voting no. All right, Amanda?
Yeah, I, I would like the luxury of making that stance, too, but I don't think we have it, I don't think we have the, the funds. I don't know where we're gonna get them. We've talked about being on this fiscal cliff, and if there's a better way to get them, I'm, I'm all ears, but otherwise, if this tax doesn't pass, we're, we're cutting something, we're cutting services, we're making a change somewhere else, and I'm, I'm open to, to talking about it, but I just don't see where we can. And I, I'm, I plan to vote for this, not because I enjoy it or like it, I fully realize that this disproportionately affects lower-income people. It's not fair, I don't like it, but I can't take that stance, because I don't know where else we're gonna get the money, so.
All right, Phil?
Appreciate everyone's comments. You know, we spent several months discussing this budget. We invested in a study to find out where we were on for employee wages, how we compare to others. I'm committed to the budget that we have in front of us, and I'm committed to trying to make, do a little better for our employees. I see no other way to do that but than to support the, these two new taxes. It's not going to solve the fiscal cliff that Martin has described to us. This will get us through 2023. But I do think I need to support these two taxes to get us through 2023.
All right, ready to vote? This, this is on C, so we have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm a no.
No.
Roll call, please.
So there's three, okay.
All right, you got, that's all right, if you got it clear, that's good.
I got three noes. I had Glish, Bealow, and Jacobson.
Just to clarify, that was for C, correct?
Just C only.
Twenty-two nineteen.
Yep, C only, Derek. We're getting to D right now, so. Let's go to D, proposal for street light expenditure recovery, user charge study from Ellers. Recommendation is to approve as presented. All right, Amanda?
Well, I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Yeah, let's get it on the table. All right, Phil, okay?
So I just want to clarify, this is approving the study to do the street lights or street light fee, not actually imposing it yet. This is just the study.
Is that it?
Okay.
It's just the study.
All right, just the study, so that changes, that changes. I thought it was for the tax, so, okay?
The earliest that we could probably implement a potential tax would be mid-year next year, based on the outcome of this study.
All right.
So I just have a motion from Peterson, is there a second on this one yet?
Yeah, Phil? All right, so, so for me, I would have, if this would have been a tax, I would have said no. I'm okay with the study, to see what it, what it, what it says, so I'm, I'm okay with the, the study. Any other discussion on this? Yeah, Derek?
Just like to say, since I'm fairly certain that surprised people with my last vote, if this was a tax, I would have supported it. In regards to the last one, I just think forty dollars was a little too high to start with. This one, I completely support doing the study and moving forward. If this was a vote to go ahead with this tax, I, I am in support of it.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So no one is opposed to that one?
No, not this. All right, should we do, you want to do A? All right, let's do A, which is the, the budget. So I'll open, if you're done, Martin, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody from the public can speak. They're rushing in, no. All right, seeing that there's nobody from the public, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And I think, Kenny, we can take a motion, yes?
Yeah.
All right, we can take a motion. Phil?
Vote to approve the 2023 municipal budget.
All right, Mike, so Mike's hand. Any other discussion?
Wouldn't it be approve the resolution, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, for the second, for number two, yeah. Resolution 2240, yeah, okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I don't think I, to be honest, as long as I've been on the village board, I don't think anyone, not to say that they shouldn't, I don't think I've ever had anybody from the public. Amanda? Jenna? I don't think anyone from the public.
I feel like I remember somebody, but sometimes I'm not.
Yeah, yeah, very few people, so. All right, let's, let's move on to unmanned aircraft. Oh, wait, 8B? Oh, yeah, this, the 8B is resolution 2241, adopting 2023 employee wage schedule and setting 2023 wages for current employees. All right, we're fighting over this one. All right, Karleen, I'll give it to you, and Jenna, did you have your hand up? No, you didn't. All right, Amanda? All right, we got a motion in the second. Any discussion on this? All the stuff was in our packet, and the figures, and the new, new changes?
I do have a question, when, when will it go into effect?
December 25th.
Yeah, that's the first pay period of 2023.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
So no one opposed that one?
No.
No one?
All right, now we can talk about aircraft, right? New business items offered discussion, possible action. A is creation of unmanned aircraft policy for the Oregon Police Department. Chief?
Yes, I think you were just excited to get to it, huh? So I just tried to put as much detail as I could in my memo, I didn't know how long the budget side of this would go. So in light of several incidents that have occurred, not only in the last month, but over the last couple of years, you know, we always do a debrief to discuss, you know, what went well, what could have gone better, is there any additional training we could put in place to better prepare ourselves, is there any equipment? Obviously, at this point, we don't have any sort of unmanned aircraft, but for us to even start moving that direction, we would first need a policy to be approved. Where would we fund this sort of project? Grants. But I really don't want to submit us for any grants and have this idea get shot down, and then push somebody, some other department out of grant opportunities, so this was step one. Again, you know, it's no surprise, obviously, with the house explosion and a few other things, you know, I cited some of the, the situations this would be useful with, barricaded subjects, you know, a little Oregon, but about a year ago, we did have a barricaded subject. I do think a drone up in the air helping us identify highly populated areas to evacuate. Evacuation is probably one of the most difficult jobs in law enforcement, because people, as much as a threat may exist, and they know how dangerous it is, they still want to stay. So it helps us find a route, find a location, and find large groups of people to get them away from those areas. Hostage situations, crime scene investigations, search and rescue operations, fires, disaster management, critical missing person investigations, the CBRNEs. Outside of the house exploding, we have had cases, one in particular, I can recall back when I was a detective, or it was a, I think it was back in '09, a very significant, an aggressive stalking case, where we suspected that the individual was experimenting with explosive material. We did have to evacuate the area. Had we had something like this, we could have done it so much quicker and more efficiently, so, again, that's certainly something connected to our community as well. As I'm sure many of you know, I'm the Emergency Management Director, and one of the questions I've been asked is, you know, why, why seek this sort of equipment when the fire department or local fire department has it? To give you an example, when we had the house explode, obviously, those firefighters weren't incredibly busy putting out fire. They don't have time to put a drone up in the air. For, for us, I can tell you, what we were experiencing is, is because the fire was putting out the fire and dealing with shutting off gas and things like that, my officers, as well as responding officers, were tasked with blocking off the area, as well as evacuation, so we had to walk through really thick clouds of smoke, get out of the smoke to grab some air, and then get back in and start evacuating. Having those, those eyes up high to see are people actually moving the way we're trying to push them, were we having challenges, would have been monumental to their response. We have had other agencies bring in their drones to assist us with investigations. An example would be individuals walking away from Oak Hill Corrections, obviously. It could be kind of concerning when this happens at 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM, law enforcement's out looking for this individual, and a mom's got her six, seven-year-old children out at the bus stop waiting. The sooner we can get up a drone to start looking through those fields and start looking in those areas, the better. What I've done is I've crafted a, a policy, after researching and looking at other agencies' policies. This isn't groundbreaking for this county. Many agencies within this county, within the state, nationally, have drones. Just to cite a few, Stoughton, McFarland, obviously, the sheriff's office has quite a robust one. I think one of the, another good benefit to us having our own is, it's under our policy. It's under our operations, our training, that these drones are flying up in the air. Another reason why, you know, fire has a drone, and we would certainly utilize it if we could, otherwise, we may not be able to, is if it poses a risk to firefighters operating a drone, let's say we have a, a barricaded subject situation, we're not gonna pull in fire to operate their drone, we're gonna pull in law enforcement, because we're equipped to be within close proximity to that threat. But also, what I learned in, in having other agencies come in and assist with us is, it really does no good to have simply one drone up in the air. The batteries don't last as long as one would think, so you gotta bring one down, put one up, bring one down, put one up. And when we're dealing with something like a house explosion, you want those eyes up as much as possible, looking around, seeing what we're seeing. A unique situation with the house explosion itself was, we actually had drones up in the air that were not law enforcement-related. So the county was able to get their drone up to assist us in getting that device out of the area. Ended up being a media drone, it's becoming more and more popular, but at the time, we did not know if we had anyone deceased in the residence, and obviously, as you know, we're very protective of our victims and their rights. So these are all things to consider when we're looking at the possibility of an unmanned aircraft policy. I know, I know for a fact, obviously, one of the, the criticisms of these devices are the expectation of privacy. So as I crafted this policy, I, I wanted to try to build in as much to address that, and make sure that we were still protecting the privacy of our, our community. So you'll see that, just to give you a couple areas where that's added, is page two, page three, number six, page four, number two, and page six, section three, sub-two, where we just start talking about, you know, search warrants and expectations of privacy, and in reminding our staff that that, that needs to be obviously number one. The second part of this is obviously the accountability matrix, so that is outlined on page four, page three, and, and page five as well. But I'd be happy to take any questions regarding the policy I've drafted.
Chief, why don't we get a, we'll get a motion in a second, then we can have this discussion, okay? Are we, Phil's and Amanda? Okay, any discussion, any questions for Chief? Derek?
Yeah, I just got one. Under prohibited use on page four, number four, images captured during the operation of a drone will not be retained by the Oregon Police Department. of a drone will not be retained by the Oregon Police Department unless evidentiary, evidentiary purposes are required by law, unless exempted, so on and so forth. Is there a situation where you wouldn't want to keep that footage?
Yes. So, like when we do test flights, to make sure all the equipment's operating, if there was a circumstance where we caught something we shouldn't have, we don't want to keep that. If there's no reason to keep it, we're not keeping it.
That's all the clarification I was looking for, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we got a, Amanda, you look like you're trying to come, something's coming out.
No, I'm just trying to figure out too if, if, if there would be a situation where the drone operator would be trying to get something on camera and accidentally get part of a neighbor's yard or something like on camera that they wouldn't like? Is that something that if it's not part of the evidence, it can be like fuzzed out to protect the, the people's privacy?
Yes, so we have open records law, so we follow that. It's not easy. It's a very complex law. But yes, so if we catch something on camera that is not releasable through open records law with any video we capture, it could even be our body worn camera, that can be phased out. They, they just fuzzy it like you would see, you know, on cop shows.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Anybody, yeah, Derek?
I guess just kind of going down that rabbit hole just slightly further. How long do we keep these images or when do we determine whether or not the, the images are disposed of or?
That's a great question. So, if it's evidence, it's submitted as evidence, and we follow that retention schedule. And that gets complicated. So, like obviously, if it's, it's a homicide, we're likely going to keep it for ninety-nine plus years. A minimum, anytime a police department creates a record, it's supposed to be seven years. So, we typically at PD, if it's evidence, we at least hold on to it for seven years. But what this would fall under is our body worn camera retention schedule. And that's for any recording. So, let's say it's a test flight. If they accidentally hold on to it, we will hold on to it then for thirty days. If it's a house explosion, we would hold on to that until we determine it's criminal or not. And then if it's not criminal, it would just fall within that likely seven-year retention.
Yeah, Amanda?
Oh, yeah, you had your hand up too, Derek.
I just have a, kind of a, is there anybody on the force now who actually knows how to fly drones? I mean, I know a lot of people are doing it as hobbies. Is there?
I think we have a, a few that have a significant interest in it.
Uh-huh.
But I find that sometimes coming in without any knowledge, they absorb exactly what is trained for law enforcement. So, they don't have any bad habits. They come in and they, you know, they fully understand. Yeah, honestly, it's, it's paid off very well for other police departments looking for missing people or suicidal individuals. You know, one of the things that we just recently purchased, we actually purchased a version of it for our crossing guards, is this, you see this weird thing on my shoulder? It's a lighting mechanism. So, it, so like for our officers, if they're out in a snow blizzard helping cars in the ditch, they can turn this on and a car will see them. It's like literally as bright as a squad car lights, and it's to keep them safe. But on the top of it, it also has a light that can beam up. And so, if we're pursuing somebody or if we're looking for somebody and that officer has that drone up in the air, they'll be able to tell who we are versus who the other person is. And they can tell us we're coming in closer, and then hopefully, we can end the incident if it is a violent offender or someone who's suicidal, safer. We can approach it safer.
Thank you.
Yeah, Amanda?
So, you are hoping to maybe acquire a drone in the future from someplace? I don't know if there's surplus or, or through buying a new one? How does that work?
Yes, so the approximate cost is between eight to twelve thousand dollars. It does not sound like there's much of an ongoing fee. So, that's really good. The ongoing fee's a hard one. But yeah, our goal would be to either, whether it's sell equipment that we're not using and that's probably not as operational as it could be, that we don't use anymore, or if it's grants, whatever it may be. This has become such a useful tool in law enforcement that we would, we would find the money.
And you'd need like two, hopefully, right?
I would love two, but I'll, we would start with one, see how it goes.
Okay.
And go from there.
Yeah, Jenna, and then Mike?
Thinking about going back to the storage, I know if the body cameras don't have a contract with, was it X, yeah?
Yes.
To manage that, would this be stored in that same manner? Or would we have to find a different storage system for the footage, or how would that work?
So, it, what the county uses, and I think that's what we would go to, is it's actually just put on a pretty powerful SD card. And that SD, SD card would then be entered into evidence. And we, we actually have a policy for our retention tool of records. So, if you want to learn more about that, it's not an exciting policy, but it's there.
Mike?
What's nice about not using Axon though, is it, while Axon is wonderful, it's by far one of the best systems out there, the amount of money it costs to store that footage, it's expensive. So, this is actually a nice pivot away from that, more affordable.
That's, yeah, that's what I was remembering, the cost.
All right, Mike?
That was actually my question because I remembered seeing the cost come up as well, but how do you do ninety-nine-year retention on an SD card?
So, yeah, we put it in a static evidence bag and it gets stored away. We, we do have cases where they were homicides that we're still, still holding onto property, and it's very well organized now and well labeled and sealed and packaged away.
Something to consider, I mean, my, my career's in IT, is that there's tons of data out there on three-and-a-half inch floppy drives and five-inch floppy drive discs and things that are no longer usable because technology moves so fast. So, you need to give some thought to how we, how this data persists across technology changes.
Yeah, it's, it's a great point. And then there's the argument to, a defense attorney will come in and sometimes try to argue, especially in those big cases, that when you converted it to a more permanent location, it changed it. So, you have to bring in a lot of IT people. So, when we do those very serious cases, we're very careful on how we do it, how we document it. But for these sort of cases typically, you know, like a house explosion, we're going to know within the first year whether or not there's anything criminal there. And what we've found to be the most permanent right now is an external hard drive. You've got to be very careful with that too, and they're expensive. They get costly, depending on the cases you're talking about, so.
All right, anybody else? Let's, let's, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, we're getting there. You have a question?
No, I was going to vote to join.
Oh, no, not quite, not quite. [laughing] Hey, I got a turkey to put in the refrigerator, so I, I hear you. All right, nine B is future agenda items. This item gives board members the opportunity to place items and, and new business on a future agenda for discussion. Anybody have anything tonight? All right, see none, well, yeah?
The, the policy proposal or discussion that was raised during the DEI committee's statement is, is on a future agenda, correct? Or will be?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. All right, ten, ten is reported village officers. Ten A is Martin's report, which is in our packet. B is village department head, staff consultant. Anybody over there have anything to say? Okay. Jeff is quiet, wow.
I know.
Yeah, it's good.
Lucy, you have any questions? I think the lights are actually flashing today.
Are they? Oh, good.
They're supposed to be flashing on Perry Parkway and Janesville Street.
Okay.
And I've been told they will be operational Wednesday, I believe.
All right.
If they're not, call Lauren. Yeah, exactly. No, I think finally they're in.
Good.
Excited to see them getting to work.
Candy, you have some?
Yep, I do have something to say. I don't want to speak for us on this side of the table here, but I just want to thank the board for adopting a salary schedule. I know that a lot of employees in my department were very thankful, and I wanted to pass that along. Thanks for looking out for the employees' wages.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else over there? Okay. Village Board comments. They have anything? Any announcements? All right. We'll go, we'll go to eleven announcements. Miscellaneous upcoming meetings and events, I think that was in our packet too, so.
Yeah, but there is one missing on, the DEI committee meets on Thursday, twelve-eight at six-thirty at Peoples United Methodist Church.
All right. Phil, did you have something, or?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, now, oh.
Sorry, one more.
All right, not quite, Mike.
The Transportation Committee meeting, the, we meet, we're meeting the second Wednesday in December at, it's usually six-thirty in this room, so.
And the Public Art Committee is meeting again next week, too.
The fourteen.
So, you're just, you're, I know you're in a hurry, all right.
No, I, I have something.
All right, you have something. Let's hear it.
So, next week, Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, at five-thirty at the Kickback Cafe, there is an event being put on by Sustained Dane that has a number of our, is showcasing what we're doing for sustainability in the Oregon area and has a number of our illustrious staff and various committee members and things speaking at it, as well as some of our citizen groups.
All right. All right, Mike, I saved it.
Five-thirty, I believe.
Mike, I saved it for you, thirteen. Go ahead.
Can we adjourn?
Yep.
Okay.
Motion, second, Carleen, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.